Go ahead and welcome everybody to our July 6th Planning and Commission Meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from June 5th.
I do have-
Commissioners, y'all have those?
Did make one minor change, just to verbalize since the packet went out. On page seven in the Bell V subdivision, it reads, "Staff recommends denial of preliminary and final approval based on the following conditions." Those weren't conditions, those were just reasons. So it now reads the following reasons. Other than that, everything is the same.
Any other changes? In that case, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Alright, I've got a motion to approve the minutes with the one change. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, I'll- any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. First item, we go to old and new business, SD 2137, the Reserve at Fairhope, request for a one-year extension of the preliminary plat.
Okay. This is the project on Valanta and Greeno Road. As you can tell, it's very much underway. I don't think we'll need the full year extension, but that's our typical extension. So we fully support this extension with really nothing to discuss unless you have questions.
Alright, Trey, anything to add? You don't have to get out of your seat if not. I meant to say, you don't have anything to add-
Thank you good people for coming tonight and talking-
You don't have anything to add, do you Trey? You already recommended the vote. My granddad always said, "When you make the cell, shut your mouth because you can only go backwards," you know?
No, we should be bringing the final approval to you guys in the next month or two.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you Trey. Alright, this is not a public hearing, so commissioners, we normally do these pretty much carte blanche. Anybody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the extension of one year for the preliminary plat of the Reserve at Fairhope.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, next item on the agenda, Myrick Place, we're going to discuss the sidewalks.
And little change of plans from what we put on the agenda. We do not have a plan for the sidewalks yet. There's a lot of moving parts there. This is the one, if you remember, on Estella where we talked about putting on the other side of the road as a city project. We need a little bit more time to work through that. What I would like to ask instead of the discussion of the sidewalk is, if you remember, this is simultaneous preliminary and final approval of a minor subdivision. I would like to ask for an extension, and that's really generated from the city's perspective to work on that. So I would like, where they typically have 120 days to sign the plat, I would like to ask for a six-month extension. If they do it earlier, if we get it all worked out, they can certainly sign the plat and we can sign the plat and get it recorded.
Okay. Do they not have to ask for that, Chris?
I think it's okay if staff is requesting it after consultation with them, but I guess the question for clarity is, is it six months from, is it additional six months or is it just a total of six months?
I would say ask for an additional six months. We gave the approval, so there's no deadline. I think we have that and, you know, the applicant has a choice if they don't like that extension to install it.
But they're still within-
And they are working with us. Seth is surveying, I believe, tomorrow. Beginning of next week, kind of on that other side of the road, so they are working with us to-
And they're still within their time. It hasn't already elapsed.
Yes. And even next month will be within their time, so-
It would be six months from the June meeting when we discussed it, right?
Then, an extension is, as I said, an extension from the normal expiration, so it would be 120 days plus six months.
Gotcha.
Alright, commissioners? I'll entertain a motion for a six-month extension if anybody so desires.
I will make a motion to extend the, give me the proper term. Extend the prelimi- a six-month extension on the preliminary and final plat? Correct?
For 80 days.
Okay, for Myrick Place.
Yes.
Did I say that right, Mike?
Instead of six months, you do 180 days. A number to, can actually pick at it.
Alright, 180 days, motion to extend the approval of Myrick Place, 180 days. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, Laurel Brook, final plat discussion.
Good evening. Mike Jeffries with the City of Fairhope. So this is the, kind of a discussion for Laurel Brook. It's a subdivision that is out off of Highway 181, just north of County Road 24. Up on the screen is kind of what you would typically see for a case. This aerial was taken May 24th of 2023. We've looked at this for a few months at the staff level, going through the different reviews. The site just wasn't quite stabilized, still missing a few key components. And at the request of the developer, we have held it off, held it off the agenda for this month, brought it to old, new business to bring to light a few items that staff has concerns over and wanted some feedback from the planning commission moving forward. This picture is similar. This is July 6th, this morning. We went out and flew this, actually this afternoon, going back and forth between the two. I want to point out in the center, what we're looking at is a walking trail to the north of this site that is still under construction. Don't want there to be any confusion, that is actually Phase Two, and that is not part of this discussion this evening. We're looking at the bottom half of the screen, which would be the west side of the property. At the bottom, that is the entrance off of 181. So the large pond or lake in the middle has the walking trail, that is the brown-black outline that surrounds it, with walking trails going through the middle of those wooded areas. Kind of going to comparison between the pictures, you can see there are several areas of this trail that are no longer there. You know, staff believes due to the site not being 100% or 90% stabilized, there have been areas of washout, the water hasn't been slowed down, and I believe the developer is working on resolving those issues. And we're going to go into some more detail of what that plan may look like this evening. Little history real quick, so this was a village subdivision, approved in September of 2020. We approved preliminary plat February of '21, granted a 12-month extension January of '23. We also brought this as a discussion item when there was an accidental removal of the 75-inch live oak. That was going to be the treehouse, focal point of the development, and it was discussed. And in short, the tree committee recommended the planting of a 10-inch live oak and 25 additional smaller oaks. And those plantings have been planted at this time, and we'll see a picture of that as well. Kind of refresh everybody's memory, this is kind of a master layout illustrative of what the subdivision is to look like. I just want to draw your attention to the center-left area of that wooded area. That's kind of one of the points tonight. That area was accidentally cleared out by the contractor as well, so we'll be discussing it.
Accidents.
Some of the, some of the features that were highlighted on the screen for reference, there's the treehouse area, some fitness stations that are now installed, some trail heads, fire pit areas, some different amenities. So they proposed, and one of the common areas that was labeled and originally supposed to be undisturbed was cleared. Speaking with them, they came back and said, "Well, let's, let's keep it a natural area and try to bring it back to that established, what it was beforehand." And they proposed to come in with 128 lob lolly pines and four crepe myrtles. Also shown on the screen are the 25 oak trees. Those were the mitigation items for the previous oak tree, not additional to them. And a view looking east towards the pier, this is looking at what that common area is. Going back, the areas highlighted in yellow are going to be what is on the left and right-hand side of your screen. And if there's, if I need to stop and go back to any image for clarity, please stop me and let me know. The next image is going to be a, image is taken today. The installation of, they actually installed the lob lolly pines already in the development.
Are those then there, are they-
These are the-
Trees or are they stems?
These are trees. Going off of what was suggested, they're three-gallon, four-to-six-inch lob lolly pines. And kind of just going back and forth, you can see there on the left, on the right, down through the entire area spaced out. Another topic we wanted to highlight and discuss tonight was there's a detention pond on the northern part of the site. Going through, the renderings, kind of, we saw a little stream, graded area, looked like some natural waterway was going through there. Nothing on the landscape plans for additional shrubbery, additional trees, any screening or anything. That is what we typically see with just a detention pond. The bottom is what was existing as of June 22nd. It was sodded, had a rain that came through and washed the sod out. Right now, it's still in this condition. I'm not sure what they are proposing as a final solution to this area and hope to maybe get some guidance in going forward tonight. The fire pit area, this is located near the pier, and looking at the image going down where the pine trees, this is on the left-hand side of the screen. There is a trail that wraps around the grass sodded fire pit area. But again, several areas where it's washed out, they attempted to put seed, straw down, mulch. It's, the site just, it hasn't reached stability and it can't hold in any of the seed. It appears everything, every time it rains, it gets washed off, the trail has been washed out. There's just more images of the trails themselves and the areas where they, they were at one time. The area, this picture on the right, from the aerial, you can clearly see that was a solid mulch trail placed on the ground. What this also showed us that it appeared that the mulch was placed just on top of the ground, not an actual, no channel, there's no edging or anything to help hold that in. This is the 10-inch oak per the mitigation of the removal of the 75-inch with the decking around it. I believe there is still to come a slide off the right-hand side to go down on that is the, only, we have Jason Essis and also representative for D.R. Horton tonight that can help answer some of these questions a little more clear. We asked and did receive from the landscaped architect, an actual maintenance plan for this trail item. We'll skip to the bottom, two through five. That's weed management, mowing, pruning, removing dead limbs, the trail surface replacing when needed. The first item is actually the trail inspection. So the landscape architect, I think, did a great job of explaining in detail what type of solution will remedy these areas of washout. I'm not going to read all of that. Essentially calls for digging part of it out and installing a French drain in areas of washout to prevent the trail from continually washing out in the same areas. Moving on to the next topic is areas around common area. These are parts that once the subdivision's done, the lots are created, and we have home builders, these common areas aren't being touched again. They're left to grow like they do. At staff level, we believe these are areas that should be sodded, they should be finalized, should be completely done and ready, the final product. This is the male kiosk located on the north side of the property. It slopes back down towards the pond. There's some remnants of some seed and hay that were there, some hay at least, and it has washed down the hill. And we understand the houses, the homes are going to be built over these lots. The lots themselves aren't going to be 100% vegetated and look like a manicured lawn. Kind of using this aerial image, the areas in orange, those are the areas staff is least concerned about as being a manicured lawn area, as it just needs to be stabilized to prevent it from eroding away, getting red dirt and soil and everything else into our waterways or into the pond that's supposed to be designed to a certain capacity. Looking at this screen, the areas in yellow are similar to where the lots were. This is where we see appropriate for additional seed and mulching. The area in green is where staff believes sodding, more permanent landscaping needs to be actually installed and established. You can see around the detention pond itself, there is a ring of sod. It was, I don't know when it was put down, well in advance of application. It took root, it grew, very little problems. We have one area on the east side of the pond that has washed out a couple times, and that's coming from the Phase Two development, washing everything downhill into that low point of that area. And again, this was the image taken this afternoon. You can see the site's still not at our 90% that we need to be, that we need it to be at for final plat application. Alright, Hunter, you got that? Can I see that paper? Okay. Apparently. But what we wanted to bring, kind of a few items to discuss tonight, was one, we have the common area that was supposed to remain undisturbed. We have the proposed and now planted lob lolly pines and additional four crepe myrtles. They're looking, I believe, for guidance on moving forward of, you know, what steps do they need to take to try to get this site where it needs to be in order for staff and for planning commission to have a favorable recommendation for this. We still see there is a lot of work that needs to be done. I kind of mentioned where, at the staff, the center part, that's, that's the biggest question, kind of what to do in that area that has been cleared out, that was going to be, we can't just plant an undisturbed forest back in its place. You know, the lob lolly pines, you got stand of pines that go through, eventually Mother Nature will take over and stuff will regrow, but we still have the issue with that area not being stabilized. It's still soft, bare dirt, and every time it rains, we're getting red, we're getting mud washing down the bottom of the hill. The other area, like I said, that, the area on the left where the retention pond, where the detention pond doesn't have any landscaping and the site is washed out, what do, what do we want to see there? And, you know, I invite the engineer or developer to, you know, maybe they have some thoughts on this that we haven't heard yet, so if you'd like, have them come up and present this as well and get some of their thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'd like that from here on, kind of be a discussion, and Mike, we're kind of, I think we're both internally laughing because he had, we had a nice little bullet point list, we can, talking points here, and I printed one out and it got taken off the slide and neither one of us wound up having it in front of you, but I think we can remember. And first of all, I think it's just some points of clarity, so Jason, if y'all want to come up. You know, in that area where the pines were just planted, is there seed? Is there something there that will be a ground cover?
Well, and I think Mike did a good job of summarizing the issues that we have out there, and obviously it's stabilization. As far as the, where they planted the pines, I think that was actually a timber guy as opposed to the contractor. The contractor was the one that got crazy with the backhoe and took the tree out when we came back to see you guys about a year ago to address that. We thought that was the end of the-
Contractor was driving the backup?
The contractor was-
Got to stay in our lane.
Yeah. So how in the world the timber guys got crossed up and cleared an area they weren't supposed to is beyond me. I think the, the pines that they planted will certainly make a difference and actually probably will turn out better once the pines get bigger. As far as all the, the undisturbed, I mean, the unstable area, I think we've got to, I don't, I don't see a problem in trying to add some seed to the lots to try to get that to, to hold until we can get out there and get under construction. The areas around the pond, I'm going to let Patrick address how they see themselves addressing that. The area to the, the left on the screen, which is upstream of the pond, where all the sod blew out, that's not actually a detention pond, that's just where all the water comes through. But it will have to be put back together and will have to come back through in some fashion. I don't know that sod's going to hold it, so we're trying to come up with another remedy for that area up there to get it stable, permanently stable. But I'll let Patrick kind of address how he sees us stabilizing the areas that are in green.
The area to the left Jason spoke about was the drainage, it catches all the water off the property to the north.
And when we sodded that, the sod didn't have time to catch and it blew it out. We're working with Spreadright right now, so looking at synthetic turf reinforcement mats, Shearforce 10 and some other products that we're going to put on that slope, and then there's a, a spray-on seed that grows quickly, but the seed is not responsible for destabilization at that point, it will be the geosynthetic. And the geosynthetic will stay there forever, the grass will just grow up through it and you'll mow over it and you'll never know it's there. That's the only way, when we had that big rain, it had held to the point, we had a big rain, it come over there like a river, all that water from the north, that's the natural flow. So we're, that whole area is, we're going through a process with it right now on how to make sure it stays. We've got to put it all back. The areas that he's talked about, we've already working with ideal landscapes on bordering all of the walking trails, or mediating the walking trails, bordering all of them with sod, extending the sod from the pond up out to the wooded areas to get more sod coverage in all of those green areas. There's been some back and forth with us on the contractor, trying to get them to do the stabilization the way it is and the plans. And so we're just going to have to do it with our own landscaper to get this thing across the finish line. We're definitely not satisfied with it the way it is. We're just trying to maintain a timeframe to get it done, and I understand, of course, if we don't have these things achieved, it's not going to, it's not going to pass, but we are just as concerned about those areas as Mike is and Hunter. As far as the pine trees, we reached out to Woz, the landscape architect Van, and said, "Hey, what do we got to do to reforest this?" And he said the native trees are lob lollies. We did a-
They did a tree survey?
Provided it to him, and that was his recommendation to us, so we just went and did it. Because we definitely don't know how to reforest anything, and so we, we strictly went to WAS for guidance on what to put back in there. The prime contractor did not, he had a, he had a timber guy go in there and remove all the pines in the initial clearing, and he was not there monitoring the, his subcontractor, and that's, when he got in there and found them, they were, they were all in it, and that's how that happened. Those trees were harvested. So we definitely want to restore it. That is the, the point of Laurel Brook is to have the two wooded areas in it that stay. I mean, that is the whole point of it. That's why when Woz gave us that direction, we just went and did it. Like he said, put 120-something lob lollies back in there, and then we asked him what size. So this time of year, he, if you plant them too big, they're not going to take. So we said, "Well, what should we do?" And we, he told us and we did it. So that's how we got where we are.
And did, has there been any evaluation? We looked, the 25 oak trees were actually supposed to be planted somewhere else, we, at that time, and I don't know if those were cleared then when the big one was done, but we weren't, I don't think we were aware of that. But they're not in good shape either. I think if you look in those pictures, some of those are laying down and dead. And I don't, are lob lollies, they're not a native, I don't think, but-
I think they're, I don't know, Van went out there and looked at it and said that that's what was there, because of course, we had to put back what was there.
Sure. It's certainly a timber. I mean, it's production timber, so if they, somebody planted that-
I can't-
-would be common.
What's that, what's that lob lolly that was on that plane?
It is. It was there, yeah. That was the spec. And we, we met in the field, we were all, that was the one thing we were actually going to find and come to planning commission and have that as a condition, let's talk that through. What does that woodland look like? Do you want to see a more, better mix of plants? You know, and I know they were installed, but, so now we're kind of seeing if there's anything we can add or if you have any suggestions in that regard.
Lob lollies and longleaves are both native to the southeast, down to central Florida from about New Jersey.
Okay.
I'd probably leave off the crepe myrtle, you know-
Those are more decorative around the pond.
And that's kind of decorative and they're not a native, and you might, since, you know, I suggest we'll just be get some, you know, native plants and sprinkle in there, some like swamp hibiscus and, you know, some things like that that'll, you know, since it was a native area, just get some of those, you know, something like that, or some of those, you know, butterfly weeds or, you know, spear coriopsis, something like, you know, lansley coriopsis or some, you know, native plants in that area. Just kind of mix them with those pines as they grow.
Yeah, and how do, how do we get that? You know, one of the challenges we have, we're, we're expecting that to be stable before we do our reviews and reports and bring it to you. You know, seed and mulch takes some time to actually happen there. So if I'm looking for guidance, you know, how do we stabilize that area where the pines were just planted?
I've got to, let me ask my landscaper about that. The other areas, we are going to extend the sod out around the pond, we're going to sod around all of the-
Common areas.
All, all the common areas and all around all the mulch trails and then refurbish the mulch trails, because they've been messed up.
So you're, could I have a question about that?
Yes.
You're not going to have any kind of border, you're going to have the grass growing into the mulch?
Yes. The mulch trails intentionally were designed by Woz to be just forestry mulcher. A forestry mulcher to go through and mulch them and then leave that mulch on the ground. They're intended to, over time, just become natural trails that get mowed and, and the, that was the landscape architect's initial plan for it. The thing was, is there was, in a lot of those areas, there was no mulch to be left. And so we brought in mulch and put it in those areas. And so the intent was always for it to just be a natural walking trail, not to like be a mulch trail, but just to be a natural place for people to walk.
And that, that may have been the original intention, but the maintenance plan for the trail that we have now, though, calls for it to be weeded, and so we got a completely different style, I guess, of trail going in. So I think maybe what Commissioner Mickler was talking about is, if we have grass growing into it, how is that going to grass not overtake the mulch trail if there's nothing actually dividing the two, if I'm saying that what you're thinking?
No, I see a nightmare of edging and all of grass growing in between mulch and it looking awful. Sorry, I'm just being blunt, but I almost feel like you need a, an edge, an edge put in, or you need to go with a different, mulch is horrible in the south, any mulch bed is going to be washed away with the amount of rain that we get, but pine straw or stone will last a little longer. So you look at the colonies trails, they're maintained, they do not wash away. That's a good one, example to look at. You know, I think putting sod up against the mulch is just, is a joke.
Well, the sod's necessary right now to get everything stabilized.
But not as a barrier, not as, to grow into, unless you just want a grass walking path.
Well, if enough people walk on it, it'll be a dirt trail right through the middle of the grass.
Right.
Which, I'll have to look back at what the original design was, but the original intent, the maintenance plan only came after these issues started arriving with the artificial trail. And so I have to get with Van on what his original intent, because the intent was for it to not, he actually ever looked like a trail, just to designate it walking path with, and the only places that were maintained were where the exercise equipment was. That was an area that would be defined. The rest of the trail was just a trail.
So you might as well just put grass everywhere and just mow a trail and just mow your little trail until it's a walking path?
I mean, we, we could certainly do that, but I think right now, it looks better with mulch when it's nice and mulch. When it was new, it looked good, you know? And so there's a maintenance plan for it where every 90 days it gets herbicided to keep the grass out of it. But we've got to lay the grass down out there or it's, for stabilization, we've got to get the grass out. We got to sod it. Putting a border around it, I don't know, I mean, we, there's definitely options to do it. I mean-
I guess I would like to see the original plan that, you know, we approved, I can't remember, I knew there was a walking trail, but what, again, what's presented and what is developed sometimes changes.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say the, the trails, those are something that we've, kind of the last couple of years, people have been doing a primitive walking trail, and we haven't had a, really a design spec put out saying, "Here's what it's going to be." So far, we've seen rock, slag, mulch, proposed, "Let me just cut a strip of grass a half inch shorter and call that my walking trail." And to be honest with you, I haven't seen any of these trails come out looking- Uh, but to be honest with you, I haven't seen any of these trails come out looking anything like what we were hoping for when we were just talking generally about what a primitive walking trail would be going in for, hey, we add it so we get your green space credit so it's not just a area of grass that's put off here. How are you going to use it? And the solution given, given to us was a primitive walking trail for some of these developments. So we're going to have to do a better job of either coming up with a standard detail that we want to have if somebody's going to use a walking trail, or having a better detail provided up front. We've had some examples now that we'll be able to look back on and say, this isn't going to work here. There's lots of slopes. How was that going to work on here? So the, these are a, have been a pain for a couple, couple of months now with some of the final plots we've had coming in.
All right. All right. We'll just have to work with staff on it and bring something back, but I appreciate y'all coming in. All right, thank you. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is, we have a couple of,
If I could, Commissioner, can I just request that we get a, we'll need something to review. Right now, we have this item is rolled over until our August, if everything can get resolved by that time. I don't know with the work that they have going on, it's going to get there, but we would need a revised landscape plan showing what they're actually planning on doing, something we can look at and affirmatively give a, you know, a, yes, we support what the plan is that they're wanting to do.
Yeah.
Kind of take it, our discussion here. I just wanted applicant to know, we'll be looking for that, um, to come in.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think that's kind of staff level, not PNC level.
I want to make sure they, they were aware of that coming out of the meeting.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
And key there is, I think, more the plants in the forest, but stabilization, like, no, no need to hold up.
Do, do, do we have a quorum now?
We're working on it. If that discussion is over, I would like us to, uh, request, we take a recess just for a minute so we can get a quorum.
All right, thanks.
Uh, before we continue, shouldn't be too long of a wait. Rebecca wasn't feeling well, but she's going to be coming in. I would like to ask Harry if you can swap, maybe come down here with Eric. We'll, we'll stick the sick one on that end of the room.
Oh, okay. You betcha.
Um, and is it okay?
No, we've had some emergency circumstances, so necessitating this little pivot. So let's, everything's okay, but let's take a recess and then we can reconvene when we have a quorum.
11 feet 211s, um, thank you for coming in. 11 feet 211, uh, 4A, UR 2308 and 2309.
Okay. Um, all of these are standard. I'm going to go through real quick for each case since you have to vote on each. We don't have a consent agenda. There is one item I do want to discuss though, and I'm sorry to delay this, but, um, MediaCom is installing coaxial cable. And we just had a question here. It is part of the review and part of 11 feet 211, how they affect our appearance of our streets and, and, uh, equipment and things like that. Um, a lot of, lot of new technology today. Vendors are using fiber optics and they're going underground. Um, this coaxial is not, uh, variable. You know, you can't bury it. It doesn't work that way. So these green posts would be every two houses. We ask if there's an alternative to that. Uh, they, they, response we got during our DRC is it's too expensive or they didn't do that in some places. Stone Creek was proposed with fiber optic and underground. I can't speak to the regional cost of what that is, uh, but, but was not implemented. The neighbors there, even with underground boxes, kind of had a, come apart and just said, you know, we're not going to use it if you put it in because we're upset with the, the destruction you're putting in the yard. This is, uh, being proposed in tracery, it's a newer subdivision. Um, but just see if there's any conversation there. I think this is the appropriate time to have it. And I,
I said that would be succinct, but I'm, I'm really, I'm not crazy about all the big plastic green boxes that are littering our downtown and our neighborhoods.
I agree 100%. If there's an option to go underground, go underground.
What?
Would you say these can?
The coaxial cannot, uh, from my under, from what's been explained to me with that technology, it does not do well underground and we don't want to create problems for customers. But, um, if we have any other option, and no one here from MediaCom, I thought someone was going to be here to discuss this, um, and answer some of these questions. But since they're not there, we can hold these two off the agenda, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, we have,
And have that conversation again.
People in our neighborhood and there's no big plastic green boxes there.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I mean, I'd like to understand.
We, we held this off the last minute last month because they weren't going to make it, so here we are again.
What about the AT&amp;T UR 2310?
So that was the, we'll hold items 4A and 4B off for another month. C is 2310. Uh, these are standard areas. This is utility, uh, AT&amp;T for buried fiber. It's in the Bay Meadows, our live oak subdivision off Bay Meadows, and it is our standard conditions. So would ask you, nothing unique about this one, would ask you to approve this one with the standard conditions.
Do I have a motion to approve UR 2310 with standard conditions?
Can I make a motion for UR 2310 with staff's recommendation?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor say, uh, any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, so we'll skip down. Are we going to skip UR 2311 and 12 then, Hunter?
Right. Yes.
Okay. So we're down to, uh, item F, SD 2318, public hearing to consider the request of applicant Du Berry Engineers for a final plat approval for Long Branch.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, we're just, I hope that's right because I said that from memory, not by reading, so.
Yes. Uh, for MediaCom or the other two of coax?
23, uh, 23 for fiber.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we back up to agenda item 4B? That is MediaCom, however, that one is fiber. Um, it's a main connection. I think that one can be, so bringing the slides back to, I'll show you where this is. This is in River Mill. Um, you're not seeing coverage, that purple just shows you in general, they're running fiber through that to connect to a box in the back. But other than that, it would be the standard conditions. Again, this is agenda item 4B, UR 2309, we do recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to accept, to approve UR 2309 subject to staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve UR 23-0 now and subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. In that case, are we ready to move down to item F?
Yes, let's get there. Mike, you want to just add the condition? I can run through it. It's quick. I think we just have one condition. Um, this is Long Branch subdivision was originally approved, uh, received, and they actually got a, a renewed, it expired and was renewed for two years. This is the final plat. Uh, the really punch list item on this, the air, air raider invoice was submitted, so that has to be installed. Uh, checking in today, there is a little bit of repair on the, the mulch trail, so we do want to vocalize a condition that's not in your staff report, that the, the repairs for those trails will be done in accordance with the recommended landscape architect maintenance plan. Uh, it's, it's one small area here. So, um, all other things have been taken care of. Uh, there was, just to be clear, there were some, um, the highlighted trees were originally to be preserved, their own residential lots. By the time you cleared those woods, there was, uh, Long Branch was appropriate name because it just had one stick going up, uh, and, and those were removed with our arborist, uh, permission.
They, due to the grading of the, the lots were actually graded at this time, so that was, allowed them to know that they needed to come out now instead of waiting for the house to be permitted and then removed.
Yeah. And you can see that on live oak subdivision. They saved trees, but then as the residential lots are graded, they're all removed and people are, are complaining about that. So again, we do have to get a recorded plat within 120 days, copy of the recorded O and M agreement, uh, the maintenance and guarantee agreement, and the bonds will be submitted and accepted by the roads we, and utilities we accept by the city council. Uh, we do,
I do want to point out one other item. Uh, we did have some citizen comments, um, from the adjacent, uh, Segfield neighborhood. The connection to that street was made, the temporary turnarounds were removed, driveways repaired. Uh, some of the comments indicated were regarding the speed humps that were there. Uh, the engineer record did verify that the speed humps were as designed in reference from the, um, Aldott's traffic manual. So the speed humps are actually about an inch and a quarter taller than the specified design, but they are not, um, they are in there as they are supposed to be.
And, uh, we, we do recommend with the condition of the install of air raider, complete the follow-up activities and adding a third item that the, the, um, trails are maintained or repaired pursuant to the landscape architect recommendation. And Jason with Du Berry is here, if there's any questions.
Hi. Um, this is a public hearing. I don't see anybody who would speak from the public, but I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and close the public hearing at this time. Do y'all have anything to add at this time? All right. Commissioners, the engineers are here. If you have any questions for them, staff is here. If you've got any questions for staff, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Yes, I'd like to move to approve SD 23.18, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, and adding the number three, which is the mulch trails, is that?
Yes, adding item three to their conditions.
Okay. That's three staff recommendations, the two as well as, uh, mulch trail, uh, being taken care of. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Last item on the agenda is, uh, SD 2322, public hearing to consider, um, veneer LL, uh, venor LLC, multiple occupancy project. Hunter, does this go to city council or does this ends with us?
This will end here.
That's what I thought. So I was, I was correct.
Yes, sir.
I know there's, if we have two of these, I know 50% of the time will be correct and that's about what I hit.
So you may recognize this property. Uh, we recently, November 2022, it was conditionally annexed as B2 into the city or December 1761. Uh, proposed plan is two buildings, two units each, uh, providing 18 parking spaces. Uh, there's an uncovered area that's going to be a courtyard between the two building. Uh, the proposed, one of the proposed uses, uh, told us was a clinic use, and a clinic use in B2 does require board of adjustment approval. On the screen on the left, you see the zoning map. On the right is our aerial. Right now, it is a vacant lot. It is a landlocked, uh, piece of property. They do have, uh, verbal commitments from the owners to the north to allow an ingress, egress and utility easement through the existing parking lot. We'll need to, we have a final recorded document to reflect that. Uh, the site plan, as I said, uh, two buildings, two units each. Detention pond is on the south. The parking lot is a gravel pervious, uh, material. We have verified that with the public works director with the detail for that parking lot that it is indeed pervious. The utilities, you can see on your left hand, north is to the left hand of your screen. Uh, utilities are, figure up utilities are available with aid to construction cost. Um, as I've mentioned, the easements, the trash will be avail, two rollout cans for each building. The water department will require an aid to construction cost for a fire hydrant that, to be placed along the right of way of Spring Run Drive. A traffic study is not required for this. The drainage report was provided by the engineer record and flows into the detention pond. Uh, green space, it's a, it is a commercial MOP which required 10%, which was point zero six acres. Um, the landscape requirement of 20% for the tree ordinance is met. The proposed area almost triples the square footage of the required landscaping. Staff recommends approval of SD 23.22 venor MOP. And I believe we have, uh, Lee Benjering and I believe Mr. Martin with us, uh, the owner of this evening, for, can answer any questions? Any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff at this time? All right. Thank you, sir.
Didn't want to mention, since Eric did leave, and this is more for the applicant, there's, there is a hydrant being installed and little question on where that can be. Eric has prepped for this meeting, but he's not here to clear that up. We will, we will clear that up, um, another day, where that, whether that was going to be back by the building or at the road. So, um, At the building or at the road?
Yeah, we, come on, come on up and make your, let us know. Trying to find the,
This is no first hearing, by the way.
Okay, well, come on up.
So I'm being represented by my cousin Benny, so give it your best shot.
Yeah, so I believe that we propose, propose to, uh, put the fire hydrant along Spring Run Drive.
Right. And there's some, I, I can speak a little bit to that. The fire code has some distance from the building where our subdivision regulations have some distance to a lot. So there's a chance it might have to be installed back toward, toward the building. Um, and I know what, um, there, there's some clarification to be made there. It should not affect the approval. It will meet the fire code and Eric is, uh, the building official is the authority having jurisdiction over that.
So before it,
While he sits on the planning commission, that is in, in per view of his role as the building official. So, uh, and, and, um, he probably would have answered.
Does that need to be on a, does that need to be, um,
I, I don't think so. They, they've agreed to install the hydrant. It's just, is it going to be installed?
If it doesn't meet building code, they won't be able to build their building. So they'll have to install it in order to build the building.
Okay. My second question, does the, um, not having access to the land, does that need to be a condition? That should be a condition.
They've already provided the easement documentation from the neighboring property. So it is,
Oh, they have provided. I thought they said they had not.
Yes, it is. It, they have an easement for both the utilities and access.
Okay, cool.
And, and the neighboring property is 50% ownership in this project, so they, they will provide it.
Okay.
And we'll, there'll be signatories on the plans that we get recorded.
All right.
Got a question.
Sure.
Uh, it's a, a proposed clinic use where required board of adjustment approval. What is, what do y'all define it as? I mean, there's an occupational therapy practice and a financial planning practice.
We were just told that there was a clinic. I don't know where,
Occupational therapy might be considered a clinic. I'm not sure.
And have walk, patients walking in, um, and depending on, we'd have to see what your, what the schedule was, how the business is actually set up to determine if it's a clinic use or is it a office use where it's more professional, you're having one or two clients coming in, or is there going to be a rotation of client, rotation of people coming in, in and out, similar to a, uh, a dentist office, something more frequently done on a 45-minute schedule type basis.
Yeah. And, and there's plenty of time to, certainly, let's, let's talk offline and we'll help work out that. But while you're building, you can, if you do need that, you know, we can go through board of adjustment for that. I don't think there's a problem on the site for that, but that's the, the review procedure. So we can certainly clarify, um, based on the scope of what that occupational therapy is.
Any further questions?
Yeah, and then after this, it's pull the building permit?
Uh, yes. You, you, yeah. There's, you're building the buildings, the, how you use them, once they're complete, um, is what we'll, we'll look at.
We'll record a site plan. Um, there's already a draft site plan that Lee Benjering has done, so we will take that. The utilities will sign it. Planning, planning commission will have a signature block for that. Once you record that, which will also record the easement and utility easement on that property. Once that's recorded, then you'll be ready to apply for building permit.
Yeah, thank you.
Not to get in the weeds, but if, is the parking requirement for clinic the same as for business, or I mean, how do we...
We've got it, either way.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for the chair? All right, thank you. I'll go, excuse me, I'll go ahead and, uh, open.
It's not me.
Three second station period.
Typhoid Mary.
Uh, excuse me. Um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And since somebody's here, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, I'll accept a motion.
If you have to stall six minutes, like, I win the office.
You're already paying.
No, no.
I could have a motion, let me approve SD 2322 with office, with staff's recommendation.
All right, I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Who are no staff recommendations?